I call the meeting to order. We will start with the land acknowledgement. Counselor Kaplan.
We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work, the Ikarakutson Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original, past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Takalma, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta village of Kwakwaka, where the crow lights that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you. Counselor Hyatt, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Mayor Graham, here. Hyatt?
Here.
Dale?
Here.
Kaplan?
Here.
Duquesne?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Thank you. For mayor's announcements, I want to make sure everyone who is here knows how to sign up to speak to the council this evening. There are signup sheets that look like this up against that back left wall. If you would like to address the council this evening, please fill it out and make sure that you indicate on that form whether you're here to speak to us on an existing agenda item, or if you are coming for public forum, which is when you would talk to us about something that is not on the agenda for the evening. Then you will hand it to Alyssa. Alyssa, would you raise your hand? Thank you. And she will make sure that we receive it so that we can bring you up at the appropriate time. I also wanted to remind everyone that fire season has started, and the city's new website has a lot of information about what you can do to protect your home and property to keep it from igniting in the event of a wildfire, and also what you can do to help your family be ready to evacuate in the event that that is needed. We have a proclamation today in honor of Flag Day 2024. Whereas the first official flag of the United States was adopted on June 14th, 1777 by an act of Congress, whereas on August 3rd, 1949, Congress designated National Flag Day, which was to be celebrated on June 14th of each year. Whereas the annual event is an opportunity to learn more about the history of the American flag and to honor and show respect for our veterans who have served our country under this flag. Now therefore, I, Tanya Graham, Mayor of the City of Ashland, Oregon, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2024 as Flag Day in the City of Ashland, and urge all residents to contemplate what they can do to ensure that our flag symbolizes our devotion to freedom, equal rights for all, and the rule of law here and abroad. We move on now to approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Duquesne?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
All right, and we are now to the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. You stole my thunder about the new website being up. So that launched on May 22nd, and we are excited to have that up. We are continuing to fine tune the website. For example, some of our disbanded committee information will be moved to Laserfish. So if you find yourself in need of information, or there is an area you're not finding on our website, please alert us, and we will continue to address those needs. Our June 2024 city newsletter is available on our website and is going out in our utility billing, uh, utility bills. And we will be looking for a new band director, as Christine Lintall has taken a position in California. So that is exciting for us, as we don't often have the opportunity to search for new band directors. So we are gonna do that for the city band. We have a call for artists out for a decorative crosswalk that will be near the entrance to Lithia Park. You can find out more about this on our website. And as mentioned, fire season started on June 1st. It's expected to be hotter and drier this summer, so please do your due diligence, check out our website and how you can prepare for this. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now to public forum. We have four people who have signed up, and one more. And we have to have all of the forums up at the beginning of public forum in order to know how to divide the time, so we will only be able to take anyone who has signed up to this point for public forum. So we have, we have eight. So we will give each person two minutes. Alyssa will give you a single chime when you have 10 seconds left, and a double chime when your time is up, at which point we ask you to finish your sentence so that the next person who has come to speak to us during public forum has a chance to do so. We will start with Paul Mozina and Jackson Bangs. Please come to these two microphones, tell us your name and the city where you live, and then start your testimony, making sure that you get in nice and close to the microphone so that people at home can hear you.
Am I live? Okay. My name is Paul Mozina. I live in Ashland. And in the summary of the recently amended telecommunications ordinance, under the fiscal impact section, there is no mention of the fiscal impact that deleting the previous franchise fee of 7% of gross revenue on exchange access services would have. Unmentioned is a new undefined percentage of telecom's gross revenues called the rights-of-way fee. The ordinance says that, quote, "The amount of the percent for retail customers shall be set by the resolution of the council," quote. Will this council set that percentage? AT&amp;T asserted in their comments that, quote, "The city's proposal to charge telecommunications users of the right-of-way a gross revenue fee is in clear conflict with federal law," quote. This was made clear by the Ninth Circuit Court in the August 2020 decision in the case of Portland versus the United States, a case in which attorney Nancy Werner participated on behalf of the plaintiffs. Surely she was aware of the court's ruling in this regard. Why then did she include this flagrant shot across telecom's bow in the ordinance? Contrast this with the fact that the ordinance is sterilized of any language that could possibly be construed as taking into consideration the health or safety impacts of RF radiation. Verizon mentions their willingness to avoid, quote, "sensitive areas and historic districts," but there are no sensitive areas mentioned in the ordinance. The ordinance includes sidewalks in the right-of-way, and there are no setback distances preventing the deployment of a small cell antenna within a few feet of someone's bedroom window. There are no setbacks defined for schools, churches, or other public places where EMF-sensitive people may no longer be able to gather because of RF radiation. The council studiously avoided any language pertaining to the safety of RF radiation to avoid litigation, but is willing to be sued when it comes to getting its share of telecom's gross revenue. The City of Ashland has no problem with wireless communications in the right-of-way so long as it gets its cut, but is unwilling to risk a lawsuit to include some cautionary common-sense setbacks for sensitive areas in the city to protect the health of the people of Ashland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackson Bangs. I am from Medford, Oregon. I am here in support of the Ashland Climate and Clean Air Package. Myself and future generations are going to be impacted by the decision made in this room. Thank you to the Ashland City Council for a unanimous vote to direct city staff to draft elements of the Climate and Clean Air Policy Package. We urge the City of Ashland to include the following in their proposal: A carbon pollution fee for connecting new homes to gas hookups; a low nitrogen oxide emission standard for appliances in new homes; a provision to stop the expansion of new gas pipes in rights-of-way by the end of 2025, when the franchise agreement with Avista is up for renewal; lastly, a resolution to address emissions in existing homes, commercial and industrial construction. Industry and corporations need guidelines to follow, because without guidelines, corporations will do whatever benefits them and their shareholders the most. All of these components would help to reduce health risks for tenants. I want to focus on something important in this campaign. It is dedicated to affordability and equity. The climate crisis today greatly impacts low-income, Black, Indigenous, and people of color. These communities are more likely to be exposed to harmful air quality from indoor and outdoor pollution than other demographics. Marginalized communities, especially in rural places, also pay a higher percentage of their income on utility bills. We must transition away from gas infrastructure to make our homes and utility rates more affordable for all. I urge the city council to keep the momentum up and ensure that city staff drafts ordinance language for elements of the Climate and Clean Air Policy Package for the study session on August 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jackie Rosen and Flavia Franco, followed by Sitkamas and Ancient Hatfield.
Hello, my name is Jackie Rosen. I'm a resident of Ashland. I'm here to speak in support of the Climate and Clean Air Policy Package. During the 1960s and 70s, I was involved in movements that led to actual changes in the way our world worked. We protested the war in Vietnam, worked toward a more just society by demanding civil rights for minorities and women, all of which resulted in policy changes for the better. I see the efforts of the Rogue Valley youth in the same vein. We need to change current policies to help future generations thrive. Living in homes with gas-powered appliances is a major health risk to our communities. Studies increasingly show the long-term health risks of using household gas appliances like gas stoves, which produce pollutants even when they're turned off. Addressing air pollution caused by fossil fuels in our community is a step toward addressing climate justice and equity in the Rogue Valley. Health and climate issues disproportionately impact low-income and Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Many housing developers already build 100% electrical residential buildings because it's cheaper. This is crucial to consider as we build more and much-needed affordable housing in our community. I urge you to direct the Ashland city staff to draft policy language for each element of the Climate and Clean Air Policy Package for the August 5th study session. This includes a low NOx emission standard for appliances, which has already been written, drafted by this group and the Green Energy Institute; a pollution fee for connecting new homes to gas hookups that fund low-income, energy-efficient upgrades; a provision to stop Avista's expansion of new gas pipes in rights-of-way by the end of 2025; and a resolution to address emissions in existing homes and commercial and industrial construction. It's time to keep the momentum up on critical climate action. For all of our futures, please pass the Climate and Clean Air Policy Package. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Flavia Franco, and I live in Ashland. Thank you for your support to move the proposed ordinance of Climate and Clean Air Policy Packages forward. This is an important step to help the city meet the goals it committed to in the Climate Energy Action Plan. I hope you will see to it to pass the ordinance so that we and the city can work then on other ways to achieve its goals. Let's keep moving forward together. The Green Energy Institute has already worked on language so that you don't have to start from scratch. Thank you.
Thank you. Sitkamas, Ancient Hatfield, followed by Tony Foster and Gavin Borges.
My name is Sitkamas. I live in Trail. I didn't prepare anything today formally to speak to all of you, and I just wanted to speak from my heart. We're tired, and the people in Gaza are even more tired. I would like to spend time with my family, and the people in Gaza don't have very much family left to spend time with. We would love to be fighting for other issues that are, that are coming up in the world, and yet we have to keep coming back for this. We would really appreciate the communication so that we can push this resolution onto the agenda one more time and hopefully get it passed, so that we can, as a community, the Rogue Valley, recognize what's happening in Gaza is not okay. It's not okay for it to be happening anywhere in the world. We shouldn't be sitting around and doing nothing when the most horrific things are happening right now, that it is our job and our duty as humans on this planet to speak about these things, if nothing else. So we're asking that you speak about them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ancient Hatfield, Ashland. 242 days, over 36,000 Palestinians murdered, approximately 15,000 of them children, over 82,000 injured. These numbers are massive, but they're not just numbers. They're human beings. Once with complex social groups, feelings, dreams, hobbies, hopes, homes, families that they loved and celebrated, whole beings lost, entire lineages destroyed, and for what? Power, control, land, natural gas, supposed revenge. Most of these people slaughtered our civilians against the war and just want to be at peace with their families in a land that they know and love. Another airstrike on a designated safe zone. How many of these terrible mistakes until you join the ICC, the ICJ, and the whole rest of the world saying this genocide must end now? Yesterday, a pipe burst causing sewage wastes to flood into tents of Palestinian people forced to live in these conditions, no safe place and no way out. Consider that for a second. A sewage pipe burst and flooded their tents. The Houthis have vowed to intensify their attacks on Israel. This genocide is spilling out into the world war that we are fighting against, praying with our actions to stop. You are part of this prayer, and that is why we're here. You are the ones empowered by the voters to be our representatives, to be our voices. Hear me now. We need your help. Create a resolution on your own, or let us help you. Stand against this gross injustice and join us on this side of the story. Prove that Ashland is a city of peace with your actions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Foster and Gavin Borges.
Hi, my name is Tony Foster, and I'm an Ashland community member. I'd like to read for y'all. This is 18 United States Code 1091, genocide. Whoever, whether in time of peace or in time of war, and with the specific intent to destroy in whole or in substantial part, a national, ethnic, racial, or religious group as such: 1) kills members of that group; 2) causes seriously bodily injury to members of that group; 3) causes the permanent impairment of the mental faculties of members of that group through drugs, torture, or similar techniques; 4) subjects the group to conditions of life that are intended to cause the physical destruction of the group in whole or in part; 5) imposes measures intended to prevent births within the group; or 6) transfers by force children, the group, children of the group to another group. So what I just read to you is a United States Code for genocide, because genocide is illegal. And so with the ruling of the ICC and the ICJ, and most of the countries in the world, this is something that, you know, we all, you know, need to be concerned about, and this is a humanitarian issue, but even further than that, you know, we need to pass the ceasefire You know, you claim to, Ashland claims to be the city of peace. It's not looking that way. You know, and, and so I just really hope that, you know, we can all come to a common ground of ceasefire resolution, and that's the real common ground to be on the right side of history, so thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Gavin Borges. I'm a resident of Ashland, have been for my whole life. I'm coming here to talk to you today about a ceasefire resolution, which is gravely needed in our community. I want to be proud of my city. I want to be proud of what we can accomplish, what we can take the lead on, what we can show the way toward peace, toward understanding, toward a multicultural, beautiful, and understanding society of a worldwide humanity. This genocide has gone on far too long, completely unopposed by many people in the highest echelons of power in this country. I know that we feel small here in Ashland, but every wingbeat of a butterfly translates into that little bit of wind that grows into a hurricane. And we, the people of Ashland, want that hurricane. A hurricane of peace, one might say. I believe that we can be on the right side of history. It's not too late to be on the right side of history in Ashland. We can show that we believe what we say we believe in about multiculturalism, about equality, about peace. Please draft a ceasefire resolution or work with us. We'd be happy to work with you on a ceasefire resolution. And I'm new to this, to this cause, to speaking out in person. I just want you to know, it's not too late to be on the right side of history. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Would any councilor like to remove any items? Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, I'd like to remove item number four.
Any others to be removed? Okay, the floor is open for a motion to approve the first three items on the consent agenda. Counselor Hyatt?
I move approval of the consent agenda as proposed items one through three.
Counselor Kaplan is seconded. Roll call, please. Cap- excuse me. Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, with respect to item number four, the liquor license approval for the Rogue Valley Roasting Company, I want to disclose my role as a board director and one of over 13,000 owners of the Ashland Food Co-op that purchased Rogue Valley Roasting Company and applied for a liquor license on the consent agenda. The co-op is organized and operated on a cooperative and not-for-profit basis, extending discounts to owners on an equal basis, and reinvesting net income in the business or distributing it to owners as dividends in proportion to their spending as the co-op. I do not believe my association with the Ashland Food Co-op prevents me from making an independent decision on this application for a liquor license, but on advice of our city attorney, I will recuse myself from discussion or voting unless my vote is needed to meet quorum.
Are there any other conflicts? Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would have a conflict of interest as a member of the co-op.
Counselor Duquesne?
I have to echo what my colleagues have mentioned, that I would have the conflict, and I'm going to recuse myself because my son works for the Ashland Food Co-op.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am an owner of the Ashland Food Co-op. However, I do not think that it's going to influence my vote here.
Okay. So, Mr. McGarry, would you like to help everyone who is watching this understand where we're at?
So, under Oregon law, the ethics rules restrict or prohibit a public official, which is although-
You turn your mic. All right, under, thank you. Under Oregon law, ethics law, the rules restrict or prohibit a public official from using their position to benefit a business associate with, associated with that official, their relative, or household member. And you are all public officials who have noted your conflict. So regarding the Ashland Food Co-op, it could be exempt as a business under Oregon law, but I'm not, I haven't done the research. It very well may, but in the interest of being more safe, I've advised all those who may have this conflict, or who had this conflict, that they do exactly what's suggested, and that is, is that you can remove yourself from any discussion of the item. It was on a consent calendar, so it doesn't necessarily have to be discussed. And you would then, if the vote is called upon, then the vote can be voted, or it can be motioned and seconded, and then you can vote. You just can't influence or try to influence anyone else's vote on the matter. I'm not sure if there's much more than, I should also state that if you do have an interest, and it presents a conflict that affects your ability to make an independent decision from your own personal interests, whether financial or non-financial, under Ashland's own ordinance, you still have, it's the same procedure. You would, you would recuse yourself from any deliberation or debate on the, on the motion, and when, if you're, and in this case, each of your, you're going to be, your vote's going to be needed for making a quorum, so you're all allowed to go ahead and vote. And if there's a tie, then the mayor can make their own, her own vote, too. If you have a conflict, you have to basically announce it.
I do not.
Okay, all right.
Counselor Duquesne, you had indicated that you wanted still to be recused. Is that the case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. McGarry, I understand that we need to go around and have each person who had declared a conflict indicate their ability to make an independent vote. Is that correct?
I think that was already said, but if you'd like, if, if you're, with each of you, you feel that your conflict does not affect your ability to make an independent decision from your own personal interest?
You can just answer that question as we go around. Counselor Hyatt?
Yes.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, or we need a motion? Counselor Dale?
Yep, I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor. I move to approve the liquor license for Rogue Valley Roasting Company.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I just remembered one thing. We have to, under our own rules, we have to agree to allow someone to abstain from voting, or else it's considered a no vote. So the majority has to allow Ms. Duquesne. I don't agree with the rule, but that's what your rules are.
Counselor Hyatt?
I move approval of Counselor Duquesne's recusal on this item for the reasons she shared.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Don't vote.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
That's right, that's the one I forgot. Of course, you were.
Okay, we move on now to public hearings, the first reading of ORD 3237, an ordinance relating to amending AMC 2.28 to add the Department of Innovations and Technology.
Okay, so here I am again putting on a different hat. This one, we've worked this one out together. Thank you, Jason. This is for formalizing establishment of the Department of Innovation and Technology, and it's, my understanding, it's do it. So it's a nice anagram. So it's a nice anagram, I guess. And through this ordinance, what we're doing is you're formalizing this department. You're codified, and its existence provides a structure for creating basically a clear framework to implement the city policies and plans. It's a clear mandate and framework to optimize digital services, fortifying cyber security, and that's, and to do that, that structure starts with an ordinance. The department not only is a functional part of the city's internal operations, but is also an enterprise, and so therefore, it directly impacts customers of the city of Ashland, and its citizens at large. And so, so an ordinance and a structure for that department actually makes it more accountable in terms of its effect, and to be able to be kind of more transparent in terms of just, as opposed to some office that's just created that doesn't really exist. It's actually an existing office. And Jason, you can go ahead.
Jason Wagner, Department of Innovation and Technology Director, and yes, I agree with the ordinance being put before you.
Are there any questions? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Councillor Hyatt?
I move approval of first reading of ordinance number 3237, an ordinance relating to amending AMC 2.28 to add the Department of Innovation and Technology, scheduling of its second reading for June 18th, 2024.
Is there a second? Councillor Hanson? Councillor Hyatt?
Thank you for the presentation, for the background. It seems appropriate and prudent, and I'm happy to make the motion.
Councillor Hanson?
Yes, thank you. I think there's obvious advantages to separating as its own department, and as its importance becomes more and more critical with security and putting budgets and planning around it, totally makes sense. I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you both. We now move to first reading of ORD 3240, an ordinance for right-of-way vacation of a portion of Fern Street.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Scott Fleury. I'm the Public Works Director for the city, and before the council tonight is a request to authorize the first reading of ordinance that vacates a portion of Fern Street. The section of Fern Street we're talking about is a connection between El Cader and South Mountain Avenue. The council was asked to initiate the ordinance and vacation process in December of 2023, of which the council approved. Since that time, we've moved forward with the requirements to vacate the public right-of-way, which has included a planning commission meeting and a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council, and also development of the ordinance language, the right-of-way boundary exhibit that's in your ordinance, and then also the map of survey. Part of the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to include a pedestrian and utility access easement overlay within the right-of-way vacation. So the surveyor has created a map of survey that shows mutual access to the lots for driveway access, but also a pedestrian and utility easement overlay within that map of survey. That map of survey will be recorded as a separate document by the surveyor through the county, which will make those legally binding easements for the city. The recorder, if approved by the council, will record the ordinance itself through the county clerk's office as part of the process. We also provided the notification as required by ORS. Alyssa notified of the agenda of the ordinance, and we also posted at the street location of the public hearing meeting for the City Council to consider the ordinance itself. I will note that there is an error on the title of the ordinance. It says Oda Street, and it should say Fern Street. I'm still getting used to civic clerk, so I think I grabbed the wrong attachment before it was completed, but that will have to be revised to say Fern Street for the second reading if the council so chooses to move it forward. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Councillor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. You mentioned the pedestrian easement. That just happens, I don't see that in the actual, in the ordinance, or, so is that just an automatic thing that happens?
Because it was- It's controlled on the map of survey. It's a separate document. So the ordinance itself provides the legal description for the boundary of that section of Fern Street to be vacated as a public right-of-way. That document gets recorded, and a secondary document gets recorded with the Jackson County Surveyor. That's the map of survey that shows the easement locations and the access easement for the driveway approaches, but also the pedestrian easement overlay and public utility easement overlay.
So if we approve this ordinance today on first reading, that will include that map of overlay?
Yes.
Okay.
They're contingent on each other.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councillor Kaplan?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, the floor is open for a motion? Councillor Kaplan? Councillor Hanson?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve ordinance number 3240, an ordinance relating to the vacation of a portion of Fern Street.
I'll second.
Mr. McGary, do we need to, does this motion need to include the amendment to the title that Scott was just mentioning? So to amend it to not read Oda Street, but to read Fern Street?
Yes.
I move to approve ordinance number 3240, an ordinance relating to the vacation of a portion of Fern Street, as amended, to not read Oda Street, but correctly Fern Street.
Perfect.
Is that acceptable? Okay, Councillor Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Planning Commission and staff, for this very interesting, new thing to me that the city does, and congratulations to the neighbors for their due diligence and participation in all this. I'm sure that the affected property owners are, you know, agreeable and stoked on all of this, so congratulations.
Councillor Kaplan?
Do we need a public hearing on this?
We will open it after, we can, I can open it after we have a motion. Is that correct? Do we need a formal one?
Actually, no. So you're right, this is a first reading, so you would want to have an actual, yeah, you'd have to have a public hearing on it.
First.
Before there's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Sorry.
So if you can withdraw your motion, councillor?
I withdraw my motion.
Great, and we're going to have to go back.
We can just open, ask, and then close.
Yes, so we will open the public hearing on the first reading of ORD 3240, an ordinance for the right-of-way vacation of a portion of Fern Street. Are there any people who have signed up to speak? No? With that, I will close the public hearing. We will move back to the floor being open for a motion. Councillor Hanson?
Thank you. I move to approve ordinance number 3240, an ordinance relating to the vacation portion of Fern Street, as amended, to correct the reference from Oda Street to Fern Street.
Second.
Councillor Hanson?
And with no public hearing input, we can assume that the neighbors are stoked, and I support this motion. And again, thank you to the Planning Commission, and in all seriousness, congratulations to the neighborhood.
Councillor Kaplan?
Yeah, nothing else. Thanks, Scott, for moving this through.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Hyatt?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Before we move on, we need to step back a bit, so stay there, Scott. Mr. McGary, we did not open a public hearing the last one. I didn't have any documents here, so I failed to do that.
I was seeking that myself.
So how do we correct that? Do we need-
Well, you can, you can open it back up for a hearing if, on this, on the-
On the first one?
On the first one.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and-
Being out of place, I was not really thinking quite straightly. Sorry.
That's okay, and I clearly don't have anyone who has signed up to speak to these, so, but if I open the hearing now and then see if there's anyone, it's still okay in terms of our structure and process.
That's correct.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing for the first reading of ORD 3237, an ordinance relating to amending AMC 2.28 to add the Department of Innovation and Technology. Alyssa, do we have anyone who has asked to speak? With that, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to first reading of ORD 3241, an ordinance for right-of-way vacation of a portion of Meadows Drive.
Déjà vu. And now we're all experts on public hearings, so this will be a public hearing for an ordinance reading to vacate a portion of right-of-way on Meadows Drive, which is essentially adjacent to the terminus of Fair Oaks in Mountain Meadows area. This right-of-way vacation was reserved, or this right-of-way was reserved for a future street connection in that subdivision, which is no longer needed or warranted. The property owners asked the city to initiate, again, the vacation process of which the council approved in December of last year. And again, since that time, we've moved forward with the Planning Commission meeting and the recommendation, which is in the council packet, along with the ordinance and the legal exhibit language of the area to be vacated on Meadows Drive. Similar process, first and second reading, and then the city recorder will record the document with the county clerk, and the right-of-way vacation will become official, and the county assessor and assessor maps will be updated to show that area is vacated and no longer public right-of-way. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Councillor Hanson?
I just had a question. Thank you, Scott. The sidewalk that's going to be installed there in lieu of this vacating, that's on the Mountain Meadows Homeowners Association? I was just curious.
Yeah, it would not be part of the city infrastructure project. It would be part of their project.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing for the first reading of ORD 3241, an ordinance for right-of-way vacation of a portion of Meadows Drive. Alyssa, do we have anyone who has signed up to speak? No, we have not. With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions, any further questions? The floor is open for a motion. Councillor Dale?
I move to approve ordinance number 3241, an ordinance relating to the vacation of the portion of Meadows Drive.
Is there a second? I'll second. Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Planning Commission. Appreciate it.
Councillor Hyatt?
Likewise.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. And we move on now to approval of resolutions 2024-15, 2024-17, and 2024-18 related to the annual budget declarations for property tax, state revenues, Ashland services for fiscal year 2025. Mr. McGary, this is in our public hearings section, but these are resolutions. Do they require a public hearing?
No.
I didn't think so.
I can speak to that, sorry.
Excuse me.
2024-18 regarding the, that one is on the election to receive state revenues. That actually does require a public hearing, so because they were noticed altogether, that's the only one that requires the public hearing, but they were all noticed together.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Mary Ann Berry, Finance Director. Again, the, in the packet before you is our three annual budget-related resolutions. One for levying taxes. The second is certifying Ashland Services, and the third, as I had mentioned, is for the public hearing, and it is the city's election to receive city revenues, and that's for liquor and marijuana. And these are our typical annual resolutions, so if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing regarding Resolution 2024-18, which is related to the declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Has anyone signed up to speak to us, Alyssa?
Yep.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, and if there are no further questions, we have three separate resolutions, so there will be three separate motions, and the floor is open for the first motion. Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2024-15, levying taxes for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Such taxes in the levy rate of $4.28.65 per 1,000 assessed value upon all the real and personal properties subject to assessment and levy within the corporate limits of the city of Ashland, Jackson County, Oregon. And the City Council also levies a tax for the repayment of general obligation debt in the amount of $215,815.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you. Mary Ann, I appreciate the information back on the general obligation debt, and that was for fire-
Station two.
Station number two. Thank you.
Councillor Dale?
Just thank you to Councillor Hanson for pointing that out in clarification.
Any further discussion? Councillor Duquesne?
Thank you. I just wanted to put on the record that I do not, I will not be supporting this. I did not vote for the budget, so I will not be voting on this. I don't support this.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. The floor is open for a second motion. Councillor Kaplan?
I move to approve a resolution 2024-17, certifying city of Ashland services.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councillor Kaplan?
No, thank you. Thanks, Mary Ann, for bringing you all this.
Councillor Hyatt?
I wanted to comment that this motion is important so that we can progress to the subversions motion. If we don't certify that Ashland provides services like fire, police, and the like, all things that are funded through the vote we just took, then we can't in turn turn around and accept the state funds. So it is for that reason I support this motion.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
And the floor is open for the third motion. Councillor Hyatt?
I move to approve a resolution titled Resolution 2024-18, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Is there a second? Councillor Hyatt?
My previous remark stands.
Councillor Hanson?
Yeah, ditto. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann. This is one of the, these are the types of pieces of city business that I think we, we don't think about very often, but they allow us to receive the funding that pays for things like our general fund, our police and fire, and-
And our housing fund, specifically with that last one. Those marijuana revenues are what allow us to do our housing trust fund.
Exactly. So we appreciate that you and your team are staying on top of this and bringing these issues forward to us so that we can continue to secure the operation of the city. We will move on now to the public hearing for termination of electric service.
Mayor, this item is being pulled from the agenda. At this time, it may come back at a later date.
Okay. We will move on now to unfinished business, to the shelter goal item, and this is something that I am bringing forward in relation to the ad hoc committee that was formed to develop the master site plan for the 2,200 Ashland Street facility. Councilors Kaplan and Duquesne and I have been working on the development of that process with the committee, and the first meeting is tomorrow, so it's well, about to be well underway. And in order to move that process more smoothly, we wanted to be able to put in front of the committee some general guidance of what this group is looking for. And so you'll recognize a lot of these bullets, there's fewer than we had talked about before when we had talked about the entire neighborhood, but we want to have that discussion so that we can make clear to the people who are on this ad- this ad hoc committee what the council is looking for in terms of the purposes of that site. So are there questions about the document that you have in your packet?
So...
Counselor Kaplan.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, and thanks for putting this together in advance of our first meeting tomorrow. It strikes me that the third goal that talks about a pathway to long-term housing in Ashland to residents who are experiencing homelessness might benefit from a reference to the possibility as well of including shelter in that location, which is something that has been on the table in the past and I thought that we should include here. I'm sorry. Is there a reason to exclude shelter at this point?
When I drafted it, I didn't think it did. I thought that the pathway piece was inclusive from immediate shelter all the way through potential other types of housing on the site. Do you see it as exclusive?
I don't see it as exclusive, but I think it would benefit from a shout-out to tag it on the end, including shelter, or possibly including shelter.
So comma, possibly including immediate shelter or shelter?
Emergency shelter, something like that.
Are there... Let's take these one at a time. Are there any concerns with the addition of the clause, possibly including immediate shelter, at the end of the second, the third bullet? Any concerns with that? Okay, Counselor Duquesne.
No, I was just going to say that I thought that that discussion would be had when we have our first meeting tomorrow. But something looking at bullet number two is, to me, I think that's a broader discussion. I'm glad that it's there, but I think that that discussion needs to be broader and brought into other meetings and other committees also. So if that can be broader discussion, I appreciate that from the economic development and the public efforts. And so I just think that that should be a broader discussion.
Yes. And I think it can be. The purpose of putting it in here is to bring it to the attention of the committee that this site sits in a larger context of the larger neighborhood that has economic goals and beautification goals. So how it's developed and what gets put there needs to be in that larger context. But I think the conversation that you're thinking of is a broader council conversation about that side of, the south side of Ashland. Is that correct?
That's part of it, and I would love to insert the word beautification, to quote you, because as we all know, well, maybe we all don't know, but the south side of Ashland needs to have some curb appeal.
So do you see, when you look at, I think we're still looking at bullet number two, is there a wording change besides where it says, "And beautify South Ashland"? Did you want that somewhere else?
Oh, beautify South, so yeah, I'll pull that. But I just want to make sure that it's a broader conversation. I'll leave it at that.
Yep. And counselors, we haven't talked specifically about having that broader conversation about the neighborhood and different things that have been done or might be on tap for that. Is that something that we would like to see on an agenda coming forward? A broader conversation about that? I know we've touched on it in a variety of conversations, but we haven't touched on it specifically, so it looks like that's the case. So Sabrina, if we can mark that for our discussions about upcoming agendas and make sure we get to that. Are there any other thoughts about the bulleted items? Anything that's missing from this list? Anything that feels like it shouldn't be there? Anything that needs to be changed? Counselor Hyatt.
I'm supportive of the goals as they've been articulated because I think it leaves the maximum amount of conversation on the table for the team, and that would be my goal with this work.
Okay. Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt, because the framework is here. I think the goals are broad enough and inclusive enough, and seeing that the makeup of the ad hoc committee, of which I know several of the members, I think it's going to be a robust, well-rounded conversation, and that's the point here. So thank you.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion. Counselor Dale? Is that...
Oh, no, I just had a...
Oh, you had a question? Okay, let's have your question first.
Yeah, and so if you wouldn't mind, just kind of refresh it for myself, too. So as we work through this, just to go through what the next steps are. So the committee will then formulate specific ideas, metrics, so forth, that go into this master plan, correct? And then will there be reports? Or when, how do we see how it's going, I guess would be the question to ask.
An excellent question. So according to the charter that we put out, there are going to be two public engagement efforts. And your question, I think, is more specifically about when do those come in this process? And we're thinking that we've got them laid out to be, I think towards the end of August is when the first one would be, and then the second one would be when there's a draft plan towards the end of September.
Perfect, because that lends itself to what Counselor Duquesne was saying, is we take these, and then that informs the broader plan for South Ashland, as we were talking about. So just wanted to outline the timing, that it all kind of clicks together. Thank you.
Yeah, the process that we've outlined for that committee is to start out with level setting so that everyone understands what the parameters are of the property and these goals of the council, and then to go through the conversations about the possibilities of what can happen there. And then they will whittle down that list, and that's what will trigger the first public engagement process. So they will come out and say, "These are the things that we've considered. These are the pieces we intend to go forward with continuing to possibly develop." Does not mean they will all be in that site at the end, but they're still in the running, essentially. And then they'll take public feedback, take that back to that list, and then hone in on what elements are going for sure to be in the master plan, and then put the draft master plan out for public comment. And the council will be able to see those documents at each step. Counselor Duquesne.
And something that I would just like to express is that I think the way it's going to be located there at the shelter, so that's where our meetings are going to be, so I feel like it's very hands-on, it's relatable, we are in the location that we're talking about, and I think that's important. It's not saying council chambers isn't wonderful, but I think it's good that we are actually going to be there.
Yes. And it was an excellent suggestion, Counselor Duquesne, to put us in that space, to really be able to see what the potential of that physical building and site are. So we're looking forward to getting started tomorrow. Are there any other questions or thoughts before we move to a motion? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Hyatt?
I move approval of the community goals for the 2200 Ashland Street property as presented.
As presented or amended?
Oh, I'm sorry, as amended. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
A second?
Counselor Hyatt.
I'm glad I said my part earlier. Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan.
Yep, me too. Looking forward to getting started.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Hyatt.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, and contracts, the Community Center and Pioneer Hall construction contract.
Good evening again. I hope this conversation goes as smoothly as the right-of-way vacations I just discussed. So before the council is a request to approve a construction contract with Outlier for the rehabilitation of the Community Center and Pioneer Hall. As you will see in the packet of information and how we've discussed this previously with council, we structured the base bid and alternative additions to look at from a budgetary standpoint. The base bid covers all the major structural issues that were defined for both buildings and discussed previously. So that's the roof live and dead load, the floor live and dead load. It also includes the primary ADA accessibility to the facilities and improving those structures and functions. Then you get into the alternative bid structure. So that's things like additional ADA accommodations for the stage, removal and replacement of the kitchen in the community center and making it ADA-compatible. Also, painting and dealing with some fit and finishes within the facility itself are kind of those additions, along with replacing the HVAC systems for both facilities and converting them from MG to electric facilities as part of those alternatives. And another function that we added into the alternatives was basically a contingency placeholder. In discussions with the engineer and also contractors who went to the mandatory pre-bid conference and walked through the facilities, it came to light that if you're going to do some modifications to the building by adding the concrete stem wall and putting the out-of-plane wall into plane and redoing the roof truss structure, that you might damage things that are in the facility by doing this modification work. So we felt the best course of action was to have a placeholder there to allow for a task order basis approved by the engineer and staff to modify or rectify issues that could be created during the rehabilitation process for both buildings. So those are all in the alternative addition section of the bid structure. We've talked about this before, this being kind of a menu and a palette of options for the council to consider for remodeling both facilities. Our expectation is that Outlier would start hopefully July, August with the construction window and finish up in early 2025 for both buildings. We're still trying to nail down a better schedule of timing for the start date, knowing some submittals and some back and forths still has to occur on the contract side of everything. With that, you know, I just really wanted to open up to questions of the council for, you know, what we have as part of the contract documents and the improvements.
Questions? Counselor Hyatt.
Thanks, Scott. Scott, my questions are going to go back to June of '21. We brought the ad hoc committee together to look at potential solutions that were cost-effective. And at that time, council was presented with a moment frame option. It doesn't look like this current contractor has bid that solution, and I, in the reading, noticed that we had a failed bid where nobody bided that solution. Why is that solution no longer on the table?
So after the ad hoc committee convened and they presented their report to the council, staff, the council recommended moving forward with the recommendations in the ad hoc committee's report. Staff developed a solicitation to acquire engineering services to do the design for the rehabilitation of both structures. Including the ad hoc committee's report was part of that solicitation package with the recommendations laid out. And we did one solicitation. We received no responses to that solicitation. We waited a few months, and then we resolicited the package again, and that's when ZCS Engineering was the only responder to that solicitation package. Now, part of the thing is, and I've told council this before, is, you know, the engineering firm has to take responsibility and liability of the design itself for the structural modifications. So they're not beholden to take a recommendation for structural modifications. It's under their purview and their liability to do what they feel is best from a structural standpoint to meet building code moving forward. And so ZCS Engineering, when they went through the process of evaluating the structure and looking at the structural issues that both facilities have, came up with a different solution, which is to redo the roof truss structure and also transfer that load down through and a new foundation as part of the overall improvements. Now, that also helps meet kind of the council guidance of wanting to meet the live and dead loads and the snow loads for each facility as part of that improvement. So it's a more robust, longer-term solution, I will say. But they are the ones, as I'll say, holding the bag on the liability side. If something goes wrong with the engineering and the design and the construction, they're the ones who are professionally liable for that error issue that you might create.
Thank you. Counselor Dale.
Thank you, Scott. So, okay, let me see if I can read this back to you real quick so I understand this. The, there was no engineering company that was willing to take on the liability for doing it as specifically recommended by the ad hoc committee. And ZCS only took the bid with the ability to be able to change to their specifications to meet load that they saw fit in their professional engineering opinion.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you for that information, Scott. Something that I remember 2021, and I remember you being a part of that ad hoc committee, as were two counselors and local developers and historians and contractors. And doing that walkthrough, and when it came back to council, it seemed to be very solid that this can move forward. And I do remember, I thought it was unanimous, and it wasn't. It was a tiebreaker for the mayor. However, after some time passed, then we come back with ZZ, and then it's my understanding, I believe you mentioned this, that this is just a menu of things that this council can pick and choose from. But right now, just where the standard is, is 1.7 million. Is that correct? And then it builds from there?
The base bid is just over 1 million to resolve the primary structural and ADA deficiencies. Then you go up to the 1.7 million with all of the additions. So the 1.7 million would be the total package for the construction phase to resolve all fundamental issues with both facilities. And that's both buildings.
And that 1.7 million for both buildings, if I am correct, in 2021, it was 350,000. So what is the difference? What are we getting that makes this price go up so much more than the 350,000 dollars?
The '21 improvements didn't include the HVAC system.
That system, correct.
It didn't include, you know, full ADA accommodations to both facilities. It didn't include some of the fit and finishes to the facilities. And it didn't include, and I'm not a structural engineer, building engineer, but, you know, in my discussions, resolving the new design mitigates all of the loading conditions for the facility itself, except for seismic. It resolves the live and dead load for the roof and floor, which was added in as part of council direction moving forward. So that resolves more issues than was, I think, previously considered as part of the ad hoc committee's review of the facilities.
Well, something that, if I may, Mayor, something that I can recall, when the ad hoc came back feeling very confident and moving forward with the findings that you came up with, and the council felt good about it, staff was given direction and time passed, and here we are. I don't, I don't remember any quick turnover with information, and I think that's unfortunate. And I do remember something that Counselor Jensen said before he left. And I don't often quote Counselor Jensen, but he said that the doors of the community center need to be open, and we could have fundraisers and complete the rest. And he sat right here to my left and said that. And I couldn't agree with him more, and unfortunately, that did not happen. And here we are in 2024. I will leave it, I will leave it there.
Are there any further questions? For Scott. Counselor Hyatt.
Scott, can you clarify? Because I think there's multiple, what we now call opinions of cost. So from prior to the ad hoc committee, it was a little north of 400,000 for each building, and it was about 800 K to do them both to the level that was described to council April, June of '21. The 350 comes in with the ad hoc committee solution, and now moving forward, we have the menu that can take us as high as 1.7. I just want to make sure I've got the right swim lane for the right number.
Yeah, so there was some previous opinions of cost brought to the council at a planning level, pre-engineering for... level, pre-engineering for rehabilitation to both buildings. I believe Ennis Architecture helped do that under previous leadership. And that information was brought to council with some cost estimates. And I believe you're right, it was in the 800 K range for both buildings, following those original recommendations. Then we moved forward after a couple of years and numerous discussions at the council to develop a formal engineering solicitation process to bring an engineering firm on board to do that design work that was kind of originally envisioned under that structural and code review of each building. And that was in April of '21. And that's when the council paused that process and created the ad hoc committee process moving forward. I mean, I will say, the ad hoc committee's recommendations are included in this design. This is just more of a robust level of work. So the ADA bathrooms will be installed in both facilities. The removal of the access stairs in the community center will be removed. The removal and replacement of the back access stairs to the community center will be done. So all those fundamental recommendations are part of this solution process. We're just more of a robust solution overall for both buildings.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Scott, I have a question. I know that there's concern just about the number when people see this number, and they're used to maybe more residential-type remodels and that sort of thing. The number seems particularly high. Can you speak to how much of this comes back to this being a public building? And also, the extent to which these buildings, being historic places, has to do with the care that, and the time and effort that this is taking? Help us understand those numbers in that context, if you would.
So, I mean, I'm sure you've all experienced this, but a renovation of an existing facility is always costlier than building a new facility. This was a big discussion during the city hall debate, that, you know, the estimates were put forward on, you know, rehabilitation of city hall versus construction of a new city hall, and they're much higher. On the public side, you have BOLI, you have wage rates that you have to adhere to for your trades and services. So that is a cost driver. You know, over the last couple of years, and I've said this, the last few meetings we've had discussion about construction projects, you know, you're looking at a 30% to 40% impact on labor and materials on the construction side. So that's impacted the cost moving forward. It's always costlier generally on the civil side because of those things and the contractual requirements. We require a serious amount of liability insurance for these contractors to protect the city associated with any risk. And we, as a city, don't absorb a lot of risk on the construction side of these projects. We want the contractor to absorb that risk as part of that process. And that is a cost driver on a lot of our construction projects. So all of those things add up to increased costs.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Any final questions of Scott?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Counsel Duquesne.
So my final question on this is something you mentioned. It's historic. It's an older building. So can you say that the maximum cost will be 1.7 million? This is an estimate. This is a menu. This body could say, we want more upgrade, we want more things, and then it can cost more. Can you talk to me more about the menu?
So the menu in your packet is all the alternatives, which is, excuse me, the 250,000, and I believe it's about 450,000 of additional adds. So that's how we designed this contract per council direction, is the council, if you so choose, can remove things from the alternative list. You know, the base bid, as I said, covers all of the structural mitigation issues and the ADA access to the facility, and opens the door. The rest of them are improvements that really lend to having a higher and better-used facility moving forward with the accessible kitchen, the accessible stage, painting, things of that nature. And as far as the historic side of everything, there's no real changes to the exterior facade as part of that process, which would be a state historic preservation issue. And as part of our planning process, we've run this through the Historic Preservation Committee Review Committee. So they've reviewed the documents and essentially given their blessing to move forward as part of the overall process.
Thank you. Counsel Dale.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Any further questions? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counsel Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award a public improvement contract to Outlier Construction LLC for project number 2020-15 and 16, Community Center and Pioneer Hall Rehabilitation, including all bid schedule alternatives except for, in the amount of $1,722,490.
There a second? Counsel Kaplan. So Counsel Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, very much appreciate this. I just want to call out that it is, that we do have just over $2.3 million that we had budgeted for in the capital allocation for the 2023-25 budget. And so not only is this, you know, close to $400,000, $500,000 less than that, it also includes, as you point out, a quarter of a million dollars, 250,000, just as a contingency if you find anything. So with that built in for, being rather conservative, this may come in well below this 1.722 if all things go. But if not, we've rightfully built that in. Okay? No? Thank you.
Counsel Kaplan.
Right. Thanks very much, Counsel Dale. I want to echo those words about the financing of this. And thank you very much, Scott, for bringing this to us. I'm anxious for the work to get started and work to get finished and start to have events and use these buildings as had been used in the past.
Additional discussion? Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Scott. My oldest used to spend his kindergarten mornings in the Pioneer Hall, and it has a real affinity in our family. And I think a lot of Ashlanders have memories. And it is exciting that we can now move forward. And it's built on the backs of this ad hoc committee that brought forward a lot of care and information forward. And since 2021, I understand construction and construction cost escalation and project scope creep. And I actually am really grateful for all of this additional menu à la Carts, because it's going to be able to include more of our population. It's going to, it's going to be a more, it's a better resource for the community, really. So I'm grateful for all the work put into it and that we have this money budgeted and that it's going to open up opportunities. I'd love to see weddings and bar mitzvahs and funerals and, you know, just all the possibilities that we as community members dream about, I think will be possible now that we build this out proper. So thank you for this, and I will be supporting it.
Any further discussion? Counsel Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that I am happy to see this move forward because the people of Ashland want and need a community center. And something that was mentioned from Counselor Kaplan and Hanson, for the community and for the people, and my hope is that this community center and Pioneer Hall, once the doors are opened, it's there for everyone in the community and not a select few. I remember 2021, and I remember the work that our local residents did and put in on this, and I remember the enthusiasm when it came back to this council. I look back then and I think of now and the words of Counselor Jensen also, the doors could have been open three years ago. I'm going to abstain myself from this vote.
It's my understanding that there has to be a conflict in order to abstain? No?
No. Excuse me. No, there doesn't have to be a conflict. The rule is, is that a person can abstain, but it would be a no vote. So if you want the person to abstain, the person wants to abstain, she has to ask permission from the rest of the council for a vote to allow her to abstain. That's, I can look up the rule for you if you like.
Then, no, that's simple. I will just say no.
Okay. So we will carry on with any further discussion elements. Counsel Hyatt.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, I just wanted to voice my appreciation to the team, especially around the ADA elements that have been built into this estimate. And I feel especially in light of many of the conversations that have come through council recently, that being able to open the doors wide for all of those who wish to make use of this building is imperative. And so for that reason and others, I am happy to support this motion, and thank you for the effort.
And I would just comment that I think public investments in public buildings are different than when we invest in our own homes. So I will, I will have my house for however long, and then someone else will live in that house. And it will, it will move out beyond my time as its resident. But that's not the case with buildings that we build for the community. The community will be in that building for however long it stands. And I think when, when we do things like this, where we make investments of this size, it's critical that we build those facilities to the, to the standard that will allow them to have that very long life for the larger community. And so I appreciate that it has taken a while. There's been a lot of complications in the process, a lot of external complications, as well as some of our own internal processes. But I appreciate all that you and your team have done to bring us to this point. And I'm looking so forward, as Counsel Hanson mentioned, to being in that building in public events. So with that, if there are no further discussion elements, roll call, please, Alyssa?
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes. Thank you. And we're going to take a, let's take an eight-minute break, and let's be back here at 7:35 by the red clock.
the red clock.
So this new special procurement process would allow us to use them for the next five-year period term, starting July 1. And we would get annualized updates to the costing for testing. The numbers shown in your packet are for the first year of anticipated testing for each of those systems and subsequent years that would be updated by Nielsen Research. As part of a special procurement process, we're required to put a public notice on the website for seven days. So if the council authorizes this, we will put the appropriate public notice on the website for seven days to allow for protests before we proceed forward with entering into contract with Nielsen Research for the water quality testing. With that, I will open it up for questions.
Questions. Counsel Hansen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Scott. We went through this last year and there was discussion about a new process, so we didn't have to, you didn't have to come before us so much. In the packet, I'm reading that this is looking out several years, five years. Thank you. So could you just, again, highlight how this is going to change things for this particular item and make things more efficient for you and your staff?
So the approval over a five-year term allows us to not have to come back each year and request approval for entering into a contract. So that reduces that burden. The pricing updates in the municipal code, based on the statutory language, still require us to come back to the council for certain contractual amounts. So, you know, Goods and Services has its set amount. So by approving this special procurement process, it allows us to, you know, establish that baseline cost and utilize this facility moving forward during that five-year time without having to come back to council each time. Where the council will see it and the community will see it is during the budget process for the biennium. So the next budget process, we will budget for testing. So you'll see that in the financials, this amount will be what we expect to spend on testing for the two years coming up in the next biennium. So you'll see that as part of the process and you'll approve the budget, but we won't have to come back to the council for the next five years and ask for specific contractual approval for testing.
Great, thank you. And these chemicals are in part to, you know, make our citizens safer, but also to comply with regulatory levels that we need to adjust with chemicals to make it safe.
To test, to ensure that our systems are within regulatory compliance.
Right, thank you.
Counsel Hyatt?
Thanks, Scott. My question is around the track record of the lab. Since we have historically used this lab, do we feel that they continue to perform well, given the fact that the samples they are testing go directly to the water quality and the water consumed by the community?
So we've never had an issue with them on their turnaround or their testing regime as part of our continued work with them over the years. So I don't see that as an issue and I don't see that changing in the future. The one thing that I will say that might change in the future is our wastewater treatment plant hired one of Nielsen Research's technicians, and she is working diligently in the lab and establishing updated testing protocols to where we might be able to do some of this water quality testing in-house instead of sending it to Nielsen in the future. So that could be a potential change. I know the supervisor's working with her on that moving forward. So that's something we discuss internally, as well as how do we reduce our financial burden for water quality testing? And this is one of the mechanisms we're looking at.
And I would assume too, not having to deliver it to a lab or ship it and being able to test on-site is just further quality factor in terms of the actual test itself?
And the rapid turnaround.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that extra information. Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Just kind of a minor question, really, I suppose. This is for water treatment, water distribution, wastewater and parks. So these quotes get farmed out to each of the different funds as required. As testing happens, it's just charged to the different funds? How does it, how does that get tracked through the budget and the actual expenditures and the chart of accounts?
So each division will budget for this testing requirement. So they'll have that. Parks will have a line item in the budget where they will pay when they use Nielsen. Wastewater has a line item in the budget to pay for laboratory testing, same with water distribution and same with water treatment. So that's in that specific line item. And that gets, as I said, updated, you know, biannually with the budget process we move through. So we'll get updated quotes or expected costs from Nielsen as part of that overall process. It's similar to what we do with tipping fees at Dry Creek landfill. You know, we ask them for an updated cost in order for us to budget, you know, those tipping fees at the landfill so we can budget appropriately.
Okay. In this case, these are firm-priced quotes. There's not going to be any change in this for 2025, but 2026 we'll have another process.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Hyatt?
Thanks, Scott. My question is around the track record of the lab. Since we have historically used this lab, do we feel that they continue to perform well, given the fact that the samples they are testing go directly to the water quality and the water consumed by the community?
So we've never had an issue with them on their turnaround or their testing regime as part of our continued work with them over the years. So I don't see that as an issue and I don't see that changing in the future. The one thing that I will say that might change in the future is our wastewater treatment plant hired one of Nielsen Research's technicians, and she is working diligently in the lab and establishing updated testing protocols to where we might be able to do some of this water quality testing in-house instead of sending it to Nielsen in the future. So that could be a potential change. I know the supervisor's working with her on that moving forward. So that's something we discuss internally, as well as how do we reduce our financial burden for water quality testing? And this is one of the mechanisms we're looking at.
And I would assume too, not having to deliver it to a lab or ship it and being able to test on-site is just further quality factor in terms of the actual test itself?
And the rapid turnaround.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that extra information. Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Just kind of a minor question, really, I suppose. This is for water treatment, water distribution, wastewater and parks. So these quotes get farmed out to each of the different funds as required? As testing happens, it's just charged to the different funds? How does it, how does that get tracked through the budget and the actual expenditures and the chart of accounts?
So each division will budget for this testing requirement. So they'll have that. Parks will have a line item in the budget where they will pay when they use Nielsen. Wastewater has a line item in the budget to pay for laboratory testing, same with water distribution and same with water treatment. So that's in that specific line item. And that gets, as I said, updated, you know, biannually with the budget process we move through. So we'll get updated quotes or expected costs from Nielsen as part of that overall process. It's similar to what we do with tipping fees at Dry Creek landfill. You know, we ask them for an updated cost in order for us to budget, you know, those tipping fees at the landfill so we can budget appropriately.
Okay. In this case, these are firm-priced quotes. There's not going to be any change in this for 2025, but 2026 we'll have another process.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hyatt?
I move to approve the council acting as the contract review board to award a contract-specific procurement, special procurement facilitating public contracts for water quality testing services to be directly awarded to Nielsen Research.
Is there a second? Did you, all three of you? Okay. Counsel Duquesne can have this one. Counsel Hyatt?
I think this contract goes directly to this community's value and their public interest. Our community deserves quality water. This ensures that we continue to provide quality water. It also keeps our quality commitments to our regulators, but as I said, more importantly, our citizens. So I think this is an appropriate sole source and I'm happy to make the motion.
Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree with Counsel Hyatt. We are in compliance. We have quality in compliance. We have quality and that's important to our residents and so I support this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Alyssa. Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Thank you. We now move to resolution, oh, thank you, Scott. I thought you were still here for the next one. But Mary Ann is back to us. So Resolution 2024-16, the budget supplemental to recognize timber sales revenues for the biennial budget 23 to 25.
Good evening again. Mary Ann Berry, Finance Director. We are reviewing the resolution for revenues for, from the timber sale. This is having to do with the related Ashland Forest, Forestland Climate Adaption Program that was presented to council March and April of this year. And the logging work has proceeded in the forestlands and this is the first check. I am told by Chris Chambers and Ralph Surtain, Chief Surtain, that there, we are expecting what he had budgeted for this project, which is $686,000 in timber sales. And this would be the first payment towards that, $153,000 to recognize his revenue. And I'll take any questions.
Counsel Hansen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mary Ann. We obviously don't know the final number because the project isn't complete enough now, but it is, it is the first payment of several. And I think it's important to recognize that this, you know, may be months down the road before we receive those other checks, but I'll totally be supporting this and thank you for the clarification on that.
Of course. Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Mary Ann. Will it be several months down the road to get these other checks? I was hoping it wouldn't be that long.
I can't speak specifically, but that's not, I was told that it should be by the end of the year.
By the end of the fiscal year or by the end of the calendar year?
Have you heard anything, Sabrina?
I assume in like the next month or two because...
Because the timber's already delivered.
Not all of it's out, but most of it. And so, you know, as they process it, we'll be getting checks.
That timeline was given to me prior to the delay in, due to the helicopter delay. So I'd say one or two months, yeah.
And then so if there's three more checks coming in, we'll do the same thing each time? We can't bunch them and just do them all three together?
Well, we're spending the money, so we'd like to be able to get into the budget as we receive it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Hansen?
We got word that there were the remaining 10 to 12 log trucks that came out this last weekend. And I don't know, there might be more. I'm obviously not directly involved in the project and not the project manager, but that was the word from Chris. So I just grabbed a couple of months out of thin air with construction experience and guesstimation there. I don't really know that exactly to be true, but the bulk of the log trucks are out and so it's getting accounted for now.
Any final questions? The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hansen?
Thanks. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-16 authorizing a 2023-2025 biennial supplemental budget.
Is there a second? Counsel Hansen?
Nothing more to say other than congratulations on successful project, Ashland Forest Climate Adaption Program. And thank you, Mary Ann, and the finance team for accounting for everything.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yes, thanks, Mary Ann. I'd love budget supplementals to recognize revenue.
Keep them coming. Any final discussion? Roll call please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Thank you. We now move to resolution, oh, thank you, Scott. I thought you were still here for the next one. But Mary Ann is back to us. So Resolution 2024-16, the budget supplemental to recognize timber sales revenues for the biennial budget 23 to 25.
Good evening again. Mary Ann Berry, Finance Director. We are reviewing the resolution for revenues for, from the timber sale. This is having to do with the related Ashland Forest, Forestland Climate Adaption Program that was presented to council March and April of this year. And the logging work has proceeded in the forestlands and this is the first check. I am told by Chris Chambers and Ralph Surtain, Chief Surtain, that there, we are expecting what he had budgeted for this project, which is $686,000 in timber sales. And this would be the first payment towards that, $153,000 to recognize his revenue. And I'll take any questions.
Counsel Hansen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mary Ann. We obviously don't know the final number because the project isn't, isn't complete enough now, but it is, it is the first payment of several. And I think it's important to recognize that this, you know, may be months down the road before we receive those other checks, but I'll totally be supporting this and thank you for the clarification on that.
Of course. Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Mary Ann. Will it be several months down the road to get these other checks? I was hoping it wouldn't be that long.
I can't speak specifically, but that's not, I was told that it should be by the end of the year.
By the end of the fiscal year or by the end of the calendar year?
Have you heard anything, Sabrina?
I assume in like the next month or two because...
Because the timber's already delivered.
Not all of it's out, but most of it. And so, you know, as they process it, we'll be getting checks.
That timeline was given to me prior to the delay in, due to the helicopter delay. So I'd say one or two months, yeah.
And then so if there's three more checks coming in, we'll do the same thing each time? We can't bunch them and just do them all three together?
Well, we're spending the money, so we'd like to be able to get into the budget as we receive it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Hansen?
We got word that there were the remaining 10 to 12 log trucks that came out this last weekend. And I don't know, there might be more. I'm obviously not directly involved in the project and not the project manager, but that was the word from Chris. So I just grabbed a couple of months out of, out of thin air with construction experience and guesstimation there. I don't really know that exactly to be true, but the bulk of the log trucks are out and so it's getting accounted for now.
Any final questions? The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hansen?
Thanks. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-16 authorizing a 2023-2025 biennial supplemental budget.
Is there a second? Counsel Hansen?
Nothing more to say other than congratulations on successful project, Ashland Forest Climate Adaption Program. And thank you, Mary Ann, and the finance team for accounting for everything.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yes, thanks, Mary Ann. I'd love budget supplementals to recognize revenue.
Keep them coming. Any final discussion? Roll call please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we are to the Resolution 2024-19 to approve allocation of transient lodging tax proceeds to Travel Ashland.
Yes, so once again, an annual resolution to allocate $517,000 of the TLT transient lodging tax proceeds to the Chambers Arm Travel Ashland. And this would be for fiscal year 2025. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I'll just ask the first one, then this is for folks at home. This is in alignment with our biennial budget, just coming into the second fiscal year.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Any additional questions? Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. And for our constituents, folks at home too, Mary Ann, can you let people know what happens to the remainder of the tax, the TLT tax?
Sure. So for the biennial 23-25 tourism budget, the remainder goes to, or is allocated for business facade improvements, event needs, peak season, beautification of downtown, wayfinding signs and upgrades for waste removal in core areas. We also have some, you know, smaller grants that also go out with this money as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Kaplan?
Okay. I move to approve a resolution to approve allocation of transient lodging tax proceeds to Travel Ashland.
Yes, so once again, an annual resolution to allocate $517,000 of the TLT transient lodging tax proceeds to the Chambers Arm Travel Ashland. And this would be for fiscal year 2025. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I'll just ask the first one, then this is for folks at home. This is in alignment with our biennial budget, just coming into the second fiscal year.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Any additional questions? Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. And for our constituents, folks at home too, Mary Ann, can you let people know what happens to the remainder of the tax, the TLT tax?
Sure. So for the biennial 23-25 tourism budget, the remainder goes to, or is allocated for business facade improvements, event needs, peak season, beautification of downtown, wayfinding signs and upgrades for waste removal in core areas. We also have some, you know, smaller grants that also go out with this money as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Kaplan?
Okay. I move to approve a resolution to approve allocation of transient lodging tax proceeds to Travel Ashland.
Second.
Counsel Kaplan?
No, nothing further to add, really. Thanks, thanks for bringing this forward.
Counsel Dale?
Just thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Counsel Hansen?
And just to thank Travel Ashland for all the hard work they do getting people into our fair community.
Roll call please, Alyssa. Hansen?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Mayor.
And we are now to the very last item on our agenda, other business from council members and reports from council liaisons. And thank you, Mary Ann.
Oh, Mary Ann, don't go.
Hang on just a second.
Mary Ann, don't, don't...
Counsel Duquesne?
So I have a request that I've never made before, so it's kind of weird, but Doug, help me out here. So I was looking at 2024-17 and 2024-18, and I was told by legal that if I speak to a counselor who voted in the affirmative to make a motion, that I can amend my vote that I can't.
Yes, the council can reconsider a vote based on her explanation. It's a reconsideration and any member who voted in favor of the motions that she's referring to can say, I move to reconsider that motion and then allow the member who voted against it to vote for.
And can that happen in the same meeting or does that have to happen at the...
It actually has to happen in the same meeting. I was thinking that you could allow it to go to the next meeting, but it has to happen in the same meeting.
It's not what I remember either.
It says, "A motion to reconsider, a member who has voted in favor of the council action may move for reconsideration before adjournment of the meeting at which the action was approved or at the next regular, or at the next regular meeting." Excuse me. Robert's rules is a little different. Unless the item already has been approved or vetoed by the mayor pursuant to articles, so I mean, you'd have, you haven't done that, so it's not a, you haven't approved or vetoed it. The motion must be seconded. It is debatable if the action under reconsideration is debatable, which it is, and, but is not amendable and the pass is upon majority vote in favor.
So the process that would then be that Counsel Duquesne would speak to her desire and another counselor would, would take up the motion to reconsider for each of these?
That could be the process. In other words, she can explain what she wants to do and then if, at that point, one of the city council members who voted for that motion or that, yeah, the motion previously that did pass, then, then it would be seconded and then there would be an agreement to reopen and then do the vote again and then close it.
Okay. So Counsel Duquesne, let's take these one by one. Can you speak to the Resolution 2024-17?
2024-17?
I understood you were looking for 17 and 18, correct?
2024-17 and 2024-18. I would like to change my motion and go to the affirmative and vote yes on both. I'm sorry, but I wasn't paying attention right then. So because I was being distracted, I voted incorrectly, but I would like to vote for the affirmative for both 17 and 18.
So if there's a counselor who voted in the affirmative who would like to offer a motion for reconsideration, there'll be a series of things that we need to do structurally, sort of in terms of process. Is there anyone who would like to offer that motion to reconsider? Counsel Hansen? And let's do them one by one.
Yes.
Okay. So we're talking about items 15, 17, and 18.
No, 17 and 18.
17 and 18.
So if you can take up just 17?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to extend Counsel Duquesne an opportunity to vote again on Resolution 2024-17.
Do we need the words by reconsideration?
Yeah, by reconsideration or by extend, you know, I think you get the point if you're reconsidering it. That's, that's it.
Okay, yes. So if we can include that language, I think it makes more sense in terms of our...
So, if you can take up just 17?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to extend Counsel Dukane an opportunity to vote again on Resolution 2024-17.
Do we need the words by reconsideration?
By reconsideration or by extent... You know, I think you get the point. If you're reconsidering it, that's it.
Okay, yes. So, if we can include that language, I think it makes more sense in terms of our rules.
That's fine.
People would understand what that looks like. Does that sound okay to you, Counsel?
I think I got that. I would like to make a motion to give Counsel Dukane reconsideration opportunity to vote again for Resolution 2024-17.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, so we need to vote on that motion first. Is there any discussion of the motion to reconsider for 2024-17? Okay, roll call please, Alyssa?
Hyatt?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Can Gina vote on it?
Yes. She can vote on it. Oh, on the reconsideration, excuse me. You're voting on the reconsideration?
We're voting on...
No, yes, she cannot vote on it.
Okay. Hanson?
Yes.
Okay. So, we will take up the reconsideration of 2024-17 at this time. Is there any... We have... Do we need a new motion on the floor? Is that correct? We need a new motion to, in regard to 2024-17? The floor is open.
Bob, you made that motion last time. Do you want to make it again?
Sure.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yep. I move to approve Resolution 24-17 certifying City of Ashland services.
And I'll happily second again.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
Roll call please, Alyssa?
Hyatt?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dukane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I'm paying attention.
And then we will go now to 2024-18. Is there a counselor who has voted in the affirmative that would be willing to put forward a motion for reconsideration? Counsel Dale?
Thank you Mayor. I moved for reconsideration for Resolution 2024-18.
Okay. Is there any discussion about the motion to reconsider? Okay, Alyssa, roll call please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Okay. And we will take up that reconsideration now. We need a motion to move that forward. Counsel Hyatt?
I move to approve a resolution titled Resolution 2024-18 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Let's receive state revenues.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call please, Alyssa?
Hanson?
Yes.
Dukane?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Great. So, thank you all, and we will return now to the other business from council members or reports from council liaisons. Anything else to report? Counsel Hanson?
We received word from Mount Ashland that they are starting construction on their new beginner lift that's adjacent to the sonnet chair, as well as widening of aisle two as part of their construction project up there. So, congratulations, Mount Ashland. And I was able to go on a transportation system distribution bike tour with county officials last month, and that was cool to see how the city of Central Point integrated with some state and county facilities to make their bike transportation network more cohesive. And we did a big group ride with the county commissioners, as well as folks on the county level doing system planning. And it's cool to see a lot of change happening in the valley here. It's not just Ashland that's coming up with these new projects and additional provisions for bicycle transportation. So, that was fun.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that with the... At the last Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee meeting, there was really excellent presentations by the... Three excellent presentations, and I'm sorry that they weren't taped because they're really useful for all of us, and I think for all of you as well. One on the Rural Development Home Loan Program and other assistance for low-income buyers through the USDA by Jacob Genna, giving a lot of insight into programs that are available that are much better than FHA loans in terms of their terms and maturities, and then also resources for reducing some of the loan amount for low-income households with grants from local programs. A second one was a fascinating presentation about accessory dwelling units in Ashland and a long history of accessory dwelling units in Ashland by Derek Sherrill, who specializes in finding accessory dwelling unit opportunities in every single parcel in Ashland. And he made the point that master bedroom suites can be accessory dwelling units in many cases. He's found creative ways to create an accessory dwelling unit that can also be a tool for meeting some of our housing needs in interesting places, and also additional income for some of our less occupied single-family dwellings. And then the last presentation was really a tour de force by Community Development Director Brandon Goldman, going through all the long-range planning, recapping a lot of the work that's underway. It's really very impressive. I would have to say the Housing and Human Services Committee was blown away by all the things that were going on. So, I just wanted to let you all know that that happened. Again, I'm sorry that it wasn't taped because it was really fascinating.
Counsel Dale?
Thank you Mayor. Let's see, I've got a few things here. First off, it was great with that discussion with the community center in Pioneer Hall, because I was just thinking as you were talking about restoring buildings and what a shout-out to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee just did, and the Public Arts Advisory Committee did a wonderful job with Historic Preservation Week back in the middle of May that culminated in some discussions and a ribbon cutting down at the railroad park. And the unveiling of the historic medallions was really cool in the walk that we went on. That was... There was three houses that were... That received historic preservation awards to the owners, to the designers, to the contractors. That was just really special. Secondly, we, as our... At the SURGE Committee, we had our spring get-together. Just another huge thank you to Co-Chair Precious Yamaguchi, who opened up the SOU Hawk Dining Hall for all of us to get together. That was just super fun to actually meet in person, to chat. That was really, really cool. And then third and lastly, again, you've probably seen the banner for Airport Day is this Saturday. And just a huge thank you to the Public Works Department that has been doing a ton of work. Same with Parks and Rec out there, Ashland Police Department, Fire will be out there, plane rides. It'll be a beautiful day. Come out and enjoy the airport.
Counsel Hyatt?
Thank you Mayor. Just very briefly, SO Ready is getting prepared to go into their next membership year. So, with that, we will be hearing from Colleen Padilla, I believe, here before long. She is the executive director, so she will share with us the things that SO Ready is currently working on with the specific lens for Ashland, and so that should be a good conversation.
She'll be here July 16th.
There you go. And second, as liaison to the Planning Commission, they continue to just move through their planning action, do their work, and hum along, and really make things behind the scenes move. And they're also really taking time in their study sessions right now to dig into a broader understanding of the governing documents of our community and what we want to see long-term for Ashland. So, I just want to take a moment because I don't normally report back on individual planning items, because that would probably just be a little different. But I do want to take a moment to highlight the hard work and the genuine attention that they provide to that work for the benefit of our community.
Counsel Dukane?
Thank you Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to touch on something that Counselor Dale said, and that just speaks to when two committees get together and collaborate, good things happen. The historic and the public arts. I believe that I'm just really grateful to be the liaison to public arts. I'm not an artist. I thought, is this a good fit? I've learned a lot. They... The collaboration between the two really making good things happen. I loved the medallion idea. So many people... I see people stop and read and, you know, just actually check it out. I love that. And I wanted to be able to say something a little bit about SO Ready being here. I'm going to have to be on Zoom that day, however, but maybe I can speak to Ms. Padilla ahead of time because I'd love to hear more about the lens that SO Ready has for Ashland, because Counselor Dale and I did a walkthrough of the formerly known Ashland Cinema, 17,000 square feet of dust. And SO Ready was represented with us the first time we did our walkthrough, and that there's so much potential there. And Thursday, the students at SOU, they will have their feasibility study put together, and I look forward to see what that's going to look like. The winners would love to be able to come and present to council, to chamber, and the Planning Commission, because these students are all over it. They are competitive. They want this. They're looking forward to it. And I believe as counselors, it's part of our job to look to the community and say, "What do you need? How can we make this work?" So, in working with SO Ready and the chamber and the community, the students, I think it could be very impactful. It can happen. I know it can happen. I mean, when you're with the students, you'll know it can happen too. So, I look forward to that. And SURGE is in the time when they're looking at chairs might change. Precious Yamaguchi is going on to bigger and better things at SOU, and she's amazing. She's an amazing woman. She will always support SURGE, but she's going on to do other things. So, we're going to have another chair, our two co-chairs, and I think our next chair will be very good. I'll just leave it there.
Counsel Kaplan and I met with OSF leadership, and just want to remind everyone that their new gift shop is open, and it's doing a brisk business, and also that the outdoor theater season has opened. And so, not only are the outdoor plays open, but the green show is underway. And so, just encouraging everyone to take your friends, get your tickets, and come out and support OSF. If there are no other reports, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
If I may.
Oh, go ahead, Counsel.
I wanted to say quickly that on Tuesday, I believe it's Tuesday, on June 11th, SOU is going to have raised the flag for Juneteenth in front of Churchill Hall, and there'll be a gathering of students and community. And of course, President Bailey's going to be there. Vaughn is going to be there, and I can't remember his last name. He is our keynote amazing professor. Everybody should come and listen to him. And then on June 15th, BASE will have a bigger celebration at Pear Blossom Park in Metford.
Great. And so, now the floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
Where's Dylan?
We can't leave, clearly.
So moved. That's what he says.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Dylan will like that. Where's Dylan?